Is there anyone else in the audience who wishes to?
Hi, I'm Lee Stevens, Stevens Architects, 209 Huron Avenue. And I just wanted to quickly bring you up to date that the last two weeks we've been meeting, you know, I've been working with the bus, Bluewater Bus Authority, and we've been working with several groups and a lot of the stakeholders in the area. So, we don't really have a conclusion yet, but we have met with probably thirty, forty people, and we, in the next couple of weeks, we're meeting with more. Then we'll really come up with a plan and some ideas. But wanted to bring you up to date.
Thank you very much.
Thanks.
Hello. Good evening.
Good evening.
My name's Richard Bertine, 3133 Poplar. I just want to, you guys are, I believe, voting on the TIF funding for the Convention Center tonight. Not going to argue the total merits of the thing, I'd just like you to think about the TIF funding itself. Currently, right now, as a city, we are subsidizing McMorn. The TIF does equate to a subsidy. Roughly, they're asking about $150,000 over thirty years. But the TIF is an uncontrollable subsidy because it's based on property tax values. Property tax values go up, that subsidy is going to there, it is uncontrollable, and you have no way of stopping it or preventing it from happening. So, we could just be doling out money from the budget in the future, twenty years down the road. Also, they're talking, lady there talked about the operating deficit. In that same CSL report, it does talk about, just to make a quote off of the page seven, "It is relatively clear that any operating deficit associated with the Convention Center operations in Port Huron will have to be borne by the public sector, city and council via subsidy." So, we're looking at another subsidy on top of the TIF thing to support this operating loss. I have a hard time wanting to, as a citizen, as a resident of Port Huron, subsidizing McMorn and the Convention Center through the TIF, because that's coming off the budget, so you're going to have to find money to replace that lost money. And then, as a county resident, subsidizing the Convention Center again. So, that would be subsidizing essentially three times. And that really hurts our pocketbook. So, that's all I need to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience? Yes.
Trina Evedisian, 15th Street Court, Huron. First of all, I want to applaud Chief Reeves and the Police Department for everything they're doing. I walk my dog every day, towards the end of the day, all the way from my house to downtown and back again. And you guys are doing a bang-up job. I see the patrols all the time while I'm out walking, and I feel really, really super-safe out there, and I've never been bothered. So, I think it's working, and I think our neighborhoods are fairly good, and yeah, there's work to do, but it's really great. As far as the Convention Center is concerned, as a taxpayer of this county and taxpayer of this city, I hope that you would do due diligence on this. I saw an article in the Times Herald, I think it was Sunday, talking about the Novi Convention Center and a couple other convention centers. And what it failed to talk about is how many jobs have been added on, how much new development surrounds these convention centers, how much taxes are generated off these convention centers. I've read several studies in regards to the convention centers, and basically, they, those that are funded by public funds run at a deficit. And, yeah, I'm not saying the Convention Center is a bad idea, I mean, we probably do need a Convention Center, but what I'm saying is, I don't like the way that this is being done. As far as the $50,000 in the mitigation funds that you're about to throw at this Convention Center for the next eight years, I think that those mitigation funds could be used for much more important things in this community than this Convention Center. If you want to, if you want to do the TIF money towards the Convention Center, have at it, but the $50,000 in the mitigation funds should be left to work on other things in this community that we have going on. And even some of that could be thrown towards things with the Police Department. Don't put all your eggs in one basket. And another thing that I'd like to talk about, and, you know, she's probably going to kill me, but I am sorely and very unhappy about what happened to Wing Teal with the Bluewater Festival Committee. Ms. Teal was treated as a criminal, she was treated as, you know, treated very poorly by that committee. I don't blame her for stepping down, and shame on that committee for the way they treated her, because in every conversation I've ever had with Wing, and I've talked to her several times about this, her sole motive in all of this was to do a community event. She had no ulterior motive, she had no bad karma, she had nothing at all bad about this. She just wanted to do a true community event, and she was, as far as I'm concerned, she was kicked in the gut, and shame on that committee. I think that that committee should be disbanded and reevaluated, and I know it's probably too late now, because to put on a festival, you have to do it now, but somebody needs to go and publicly apologize to Mrs. Teal. Seriously. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else? Yeah. Yeah, that's okay.
Meeting Mayor, City Manager, Council members. My name is Darren Rushing, I live at 618 14th Street. I would like to, I guess, address a few of my concerns about the I-69 corridor and the entirety of its impact. Have, just a general question, have any or all of you had the opportunity to read the twenty-page document that involves the corridor and the different, I guess, legalese that, how it's presented? Who gets what powers, et cetera, et cetera? The things that I'm concerned about are, I believe it's, I believe it's Section 14.1, I believe it is, where that, when it's approved, that the contract cannot be changed. That is kind of troubling. Anything that's put into, I mean, even laws, legislature, on the state level, they're always subject to change or modification. Now, it can be a great complicated process, but in the case of a private contract, if we do this, that's it. That there is no, there is no going back, there is no changing it. That bothers me. If we're going to represent literally hundreds of thousands of people because of the impact of the corridor and the multiple counties, there needs to be more accountability. That, to me, I don't think that's, it may be a good contract for whoever's in charge of it, I don't think it's ethically responsible of the people that pay the taxes that support it. It doesn't make any sense to me. The other thing that I'm concerned with is the, Mr. Fletcher brought up how you don't lose your rights to this, that, everything else. Stated that basically nothing changes. Well, if nothing changes, then why are we doing it? The corporations getting created to do something, and if we're going to give our governmental authority to them to make those decisions, there needs to be accountability. And to me, the way it's written, it doesn't seem to be that way. So, in the consideration for all of the benefits, I urge you to consider what would happen if it went wrong? Because once you vote yes, there is no changing it. Now, if you create something and it works great, wonderful. If you create Frankenstein's monster and you hand him your pitchfork, where are you at then? It might be a silly description, but with a contract, it's not, it's not, it's not a government law, it's not subject to legislature. It's simply black and white. There is no arguing it. I would urge you to seriously consider the impacts of the way it's written and the potential negative effects that it could have because of the way it's put together. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. Angela Kelly, and I'm a new homeowner, again, in the city of Port Huron, so I'm a 11th Street girl officially. And the home's been in our family for many generations, and I am in the process of trying to refurbish the inside, and we'll see about the rest. There is a rental unit, it's mixed ownership and rental units on my certain block where I am, and it's been really hard. And I think that the Landlord Association, I personally walked into the chief's office, and I was, I know he's busy, but he had me come right in, I like that open-door policy, and I felt very comfortable. If we can get the landlords, and I'm very lucky, because on either side of me is a rental, however, I have wonderful neighbors, we all watch each other's houses, they have beautiful security cameras, and, you know, I don't have to worry that my home is going to be broken into. But I know that in a lot of neighborhoods, we do feel that way. We clutch our children when we walk to our cars, because we don't know what crazy person is going to come up and say something. And this just really disheartens me, because, you know, for a long time, I've lived in the country or outside of Port Huron, granted, I've worked here and been community-involved, but I was just very sad how the neighborhoods have declined, so this is really refreshing. And I'm hoping to participate in any way that I can, and I think this is something that's really needed, especially if you want to attract the young families back to this neighborhood. Because we can get the young professionals in the lost downtown, but eventually, they're going to need homes to buy for their families. And what better place than somewhere really close to downtown where it's accessible? So, I really congratulate the police force, and it's very nice to have that, not be afraid to make a phone call if you have to. And back to the Convention Center, we have a lot of great ideas. I think it's pushing the envelope forward, and it's good to hear that we want to make investments in our own community. But I am concerned about the operation costs. I think the public would more embrace this if we could have more solid numbers. And I do have to disagree with Marcy. I talked to the hotel representative, and they have their own home goods. They're not going to be buying furniture from us, they're not going to be buying home goods or glasswares and things like that. So, we need to, if we're going to invest community and taxpayers, especially business dollars, which comes from the TIFA funds, you need to invest back into the family businesses in this town, and make sure that you understand and remember that, we are the community. We voted you in, you are our representative, and if you can help us and listen to us with an open mind and an open ear and do the right thing, is what my mama always says. Thank you.
Is there anyone else who wishes to address the council under public comment? Seeing no one, I'll declare public comment closed, and we will move on to the consent agenda. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Thank you, Councilmember Lewandowski, is there a second?
Second.
Mayor Protem Archibald, take the vote.
Councilmember Cole?
Yes.
Councilmember Harris?
Yes.
Councilmember Lewandowski?
Yes.
Councilmember Moller?
Yes.
Councilmember Ruiz?
Yes.
Councilmember Archibald?
Yes.
Mayor Rep. Yes. Some of the items on the consent agenda was transmitting the quarterly financial report for the three-month period ending September 30th. We received and filed that report. Confirmed and declared single-lot special assessments totaling $27,529.72 for demolition proceedings. Scheduled a public hearing for January the 9th to hear comments on the establishment of a proposed 522 Huron Avenue Obsolete Property Rehabilitation Act district. Scheduled a public hearing for January 9th to hear comments on the application of LMP investments. Incorporated for an obsolete property rehabilitation exemption certificate for the property at 522 Huron Avenue. Confirmed and declared, declared, single-lot special assessments totaling $1,870.80 for removing noxious weeds or unlawful growths or blight. Confirmed and declared, single-lot special assessments totaling $3,226.35 for sidewalk replacements. And we are with City Manager, report number one, please.
Is transmitting the city's comprehensive annual financial report for the year-end at June 30th, 2011, in accordance with the requirements of Section 6-16 of the city charter.
Do we have a motion to receive and file?
So moved.
Thank you, Mayor Protem Archibald, is there a second?
Support.
Thank you, Councilmember Lewandowski. Is there a discussion, or before the discussion, perhaps we could have Mr. Ogden come up and give us a brief summary? I know, it's a long report for a brief summary, but...
Mayor Rep., members of council, I was just looking, it's 178 pages. I'll try not to go over them all.
Don't read them all.
Or even very many of them. And actually, I think for the first time since I've been at the city of Port Huron, that's the same number of pages as last year. It's been growing every year as our profession comes up with new pronouncements. But what you have before you tonight is the annual comprehensive, or the comprehensive annual financial report for the fiscal year ended June 30, 2011. It is very similar to what's been prepared in previous years. It's been prepared in accordance with the governmental accounting standards, it's been audited by the firm of Plant and Moran, they've given it an unqualified report, which is the highest possible report. They also included, it's in your packet tonight, official correspondence from them, something that the profession requires them to do now, to correspond directly with the governing board. They had, fortunately, no issues this year and nothing to bring before you. Beyond the basic financial statements, there's also a multi-paid statistical section with comparative data going back up to ten years, and it's the part of the report I always found, first, I'm an accountant, but found most interesting before I worked at the city. There's just some interesting things there. There's also the A-133 portion, or the single audit portion, which is the audit of our federal funds. This past year, we got about $4.8 million in federal funds across a variety of programs of the city. Those are audited separately in accordance with the specific rules, and again, there were no issues there. Beyond that, I guess, the general fund for the year ended up pretty close to budget, slightly positive, about $6,800, which on a $20 million budget is fairly small. Revenues were slightly higher than expected, primarily in the grant area. Capital expenditures and the transfers to support them were lower than expected, but those two things offset. There was originally a budgeted use of fund balance, there was no use of fund balance. Expenses were very close to the original budget. The two areas where there were some significant changes, you know, one you were well aware of, demolitions, which really accelerated during last fiscal year, were not originally contemplated in the budget. And then the other, Detroit Edison hit us with a fairly large increase in cost for street lighting and made some adjustments for prior year, once we were well into the current year. But those things were handled by reducing expenses in other areas. Beyond that, the water and sewer funds, revenues are somewhat over budget, because usage held steady, and expenses were under budget primarily from cost-cutting measures that were implemented in terms of operations, and those are reflected then in the current year budget, which was lower than the prior year. So, that's, I guess, a brief overview of the financial statements.
Thank you. Is there anyone on council who has any questions for Mr. Ogden?
Mayor Rep.
Yes, Councilmember Moller.
Yeah, John, what page did you find interesting? Because I'll have to reread that page. Pardon me?
It's multiple pages.
Which pages, specifically?
Anybody else have any?
Mayor Rep.
Yes, Councilmember Harris.
I looked at this, and I'm kind of, I don't think I'm confused, but I have a problem in here, it says, "This report is intended solely for the use of city council management of the city of Port Huron. It is not intended to be and should not be used by anyone other than those specified." I, if this thing is so great, why should we have a problem not letting the public see this?
There's no issue with letting the public see it. You're talking about the report specifically to council? This page? Yeah.
You know, it says right in here that we can't share that. So, if I wanted to take it to my personal auditor, I couldn't do that.
There's nothing here that can't be shared. They prepared the report for council, and they're saying that they prepared it for council, but it's not, it's not in any way private.
Okay.
That's, I mean, there were, copies went out with all the packets, they went to the media.
I know, but when I read that, that sends an alarm.
No, it's really, they're, it's what the profession requires, in terms of the wording. So, you know, unfortunately, we have to use the words the profession tells us we have to use, and in those cases, that the auditor's really just saying, "The report was prepared for you, for your use."
Anyone else on council? Thank you. And we'll take the vote.
Councilmember Harris?
Yes.
Councilmember Lewandowski?
Yes.
Councilmember Moller?
Yes.
Councilmember Ruiz?
Yes.
Councilmember Archibald?
Yes.
Councilmember Cole?
Yes.
Mayor Rep. Yes. Move on to resolution number one.
Number one is authorizing 21 payments.
Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Thank you, Councilmember Lewandowski, is there a second?
Second.
Mayor Protem Archibald, is there discussion? We'll take the vote.
Councilmember Lewandowski?
Yes.
Councilmember Moller?
Yes.
Councilmember Ruiz?
Yes.
Councilmember Archibald?
Yes.
Councilmember Cole?
Yes.
Councilmember Harris?
Yes.
Mayor Rep.
Yes.
Resolution number two.
Is approving an easement agreement with St. Clair County to allow installation of a fiber optic line across the West Quay Street parking lot and the southside dock.
Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Councilmember Lewandowski, is there a second?
Second.
Councilmember Cole, is there discussion? I guess I'd just like to ask for the public, as well as us, could you explain what this is?
Mayor Rep. and council members, I do have a map to help you and the public understand a little better about what we're speaking about. The St. Clair County, St. Clair County is constructing a fiber optic line to improve their internet, or their intranet communications amongst their various buildings and reliability of those connections. They use some wireless attachments, and now they're improving that with fiber optic attachments. And they needed to cross the Black River somewhere, and there happens to be a utility corridor that crosses the Black River at this location. On the north side of the Black River, that's the West Quay parking lot, the zebra bar is shown to the east. There are two easements across the parking lot currently. One is DTE's easement, and there is a tunnel, a utility tunnel, that goes under the Black River and goes through that easement. To the east of the DTE easement is a city of Port Huron easement for storm sewers and some water services to, a stormwater outlet from when we did the CSO project that was called the South, the Erie South Project. Immediately west of the DTE easement, and just next to it, is going to be a six-foot-wide easement in favor of St. Clair County, and they're going to, they're going to bore a fiber optic conduit across the Black River, and they need a landing place on each side of the river. I believe eventually, that will go overhead, but at least initially, it has to get across the river somewhere, and the city had property available to, if you will, to work cooperatively with the county to facilitate this effort.
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions for Mr. Clegg?
Mayor Rep. My question is, how would this affect Resolution 9 about the sale of the property?
We were very, that's a very good question.
I was going to ask that.
Excellent question. We were very careful, Councilmember, to make certain that we kept the easement as narrow as possible. One would be able to construct grassy areas and parking spaces, so on, walkways, over this easement. What one couldn't do is build a structure. So, as long as the structure is not built over, those easements were fine. And that's one of the reasons why these easements work, no matter what kind of development would take place at this location, somewhere people have to walk and you have to have parking, and that's why we kept all the easements as close to one another as we could. The DTE easement's been there for many, many years.
Any other questions for Mr. Clegg? Yes.
Is, I guess we said her name, it's in here, Dave Witt, aware that the easement will be going through there?
I have to bow to my boss on that one. I don't know.
What was the question?
The question was, is Mr. Witt aware of the easement?
Yes, he is. The Witt project is going to be the west 200 feet of this lot, and it does not get anywhere near these easements, so.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Any other questions from council?
Mayor Rep.
Yes.
I heard you mention that it may eventually go overhead, would that then eliminate the need for this right of way?
No, the, I believe that the fiber optic line is running through the community in two fashions. In some cases, from utility poles are overhead, where utility poles are readily available, and in some locations, underground. Not uncommon to transport utilities that way, when you're speaking of wiring. And in this particular case, underground is appropriate for going under the river, and, but it might be less expensive for the county to use existing poles elsewhere in the community. I don't know all the details, but someone from the county is here, if you have further questions on that.
Our discussions with the county were they would stay underground till the first utility pole, and then go up.
And then go up. Yeah, so there's an inner mix of the entire system, but this particular location, it'll be underground.
Any other questions from council? Thank you, Mr. Clegg.
You're welcome.
And we'll take the vote.
Councilmember Moller?
Yes.
Councilmember Ruiz?
Yes.
Councilmember Archibald?
Yes.
Councilmember Cole?
Yes.
Councilmember Harris?
Yes.
Councilmember Lewandowski?
Yes.
Mayor Rep.
Yes.
Move on to resolution number three.
Is approving the interlocal agreement creating the I-69 International Trade Corridor next to Michigan Development Corporation, and appointing the city manager to the corporation board to represent the city of Port Huron.
Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Thank you, Mayor Protem Archibald, is there a second?
Support.
Thank you, Councilmember Ruiz, is there discussion?
Mayor?
Yes, Councilmember Harris.
I'd just like the public to know here that, you know, I've looked over this and discussed it and heard a number of things about it, and I'm probably going to vote no on this. Some of the things that I have a problem with is, number one, we don't have any report from the Canadian National Railroad about how this is going to affect our economy, we don't have any report on how commercial trucking is going to affect this corridor. And I think those are a lot of things that we really need to discuss, or we really should know, because the limited amount of impact that I've found out from the CNN is the fact that there's not going to be a spinoff till Chicago. There's nothing that's going to happen on these trains that are going to give the prospect to a corridor anything positive.
Is there any other comments or discussion? Yes, Councilmember Lewandowski.
A question was brought up about Section 14.1, and should I ask corporation counsel if they could answer that?
Yes, please.
The gentleman who got up made the comment that this document could not be amended. In fact, what it says, "The agreement may be amended, or in an alternative form, may be adopted upon the written agreement of the parties." So, that's basically the way contracts work, so if you miss a meeting, they don't amend it on you, you got to agree to it, so I'm not sure where that came from.
Any other questions from anyone on council? We'll take the vote.
Councilmember Ruiz?
Yes.
Councilmember Archibald?
Yes.
Councilmember Cole?
Yes.
Councilmember Harris?
No.
Councilmember Lewandowski?
Yes.
Councilmember Moller?
No.
Mayor Rep.
Yes.
Resolution number nine.
Is directing the city clerk to place on the ballot at the May 8, 2012 election, the question as to whether the city should be allowed to sell, long-term lease, or option to sell, the property known as the West Quay Street parking lot to a qualified developer.
Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Thank you, Councilmember Harris, is there a second?
Second.
Mayor Protem Archibald, is there questions, discussion? We'll take the vote.
Councilmember Archibald?
Yes.
Councilmember Cole?
Yes.
Councilmember Harris?
Yes.
Councilmember Lewandowski?
Yes.
Councilmember Moller?
Yes.
Councilmember Ruiz?
Yes.
Mayor Rep.
Yes.
Resolution number 10.
Is amending the articles of incorporation of the McMorn Civic Center Authority for the purpose of extending the term of the authority and the election of the commissioners.
Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Thank you, Councilmember Harris, is there a second?
Second.
Mayor Protem Archibald, is there any discussion? We'll take the vote.
Councilmember Cole?
Yes.
Councilmember Harris?
Yes.
Councilmember Lewandowski?
No.
Councilmember Moller?
No.
Councilmember Ruiz?
Yes.
Councilmember Archibald?
Yes.
Mayor Rep.
Yes.
Yes.
Resolution number 11.
Is appointing members of the McMoRan Civic Center Authority.
Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Thank you. Mayor Protem Archibald, is there a second?
Second.
Councilmember Cole, is there discussion? We'll take the vote.
Councilmember Harris.
Yes.
Councilmember Lewandowski.
No.
Councilmember Mueller.
No.
Councilmember Ruiz.
Yes.
Councilmember Archibald.
Yes.
Councilmember Cole.
Yes.
Mayor Rep.
Yes. And before we move on, just so that the public knows, appointing members to the authority, we've only appointed four members at this time, enough to continue operation, have a majority so the business can continue. There are three vacancies still on this board and I would encourage anyone in the community who feels they have a skill set that they can offer to help move it forward. There's applications available online, online or in the clerk's office. If you fill them out and submit them, council will be appointing the balance of the authority in January. Thank you. And we'll move on to resolution number 12.
Which is reinstating three police officer positions in the Port Huron Police Department and authorizing administration to make the appropriate budgetary adjustments. This resolution was requested by Councilmember Mueller.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second. Thank you. Seconded by Councilmember Harris, moved by Councilmember Mueller, is there a discussion?
Mayor Rep?
Yes, Councilmember Lewandowski.
I would move to postpone this till budgetary sessions or to the recommendation of the city police chief.
Is there a second for postponement?
Second.
Councilmember Cole, discussion on the postponement?
Mayor Rep?
Yes, Councilmember Mueller.
The chief pointed out the seriousness of the problem along with other officers at the last meeting that we had a week ago. He also pointed out that it would take up to three to four months before we could have the officers ready to go on the streets and be active. The council decided at that time that it was our number one priority was the citizens' and public safety of the community. Several people here today have expressed the importance of public safety over the other ideals of convention centers and so on and so forth. I think without delay, and again, going back to what the chief said last week, we had another stabbing this weekend that was related to drug traffic. I think it's important, I'm not authorizing that we go to a drug task force or anything like that, I'm simply asking for three more road officers. And the chief stated that he could start his aggressive patrol with three officers if he could get started with three. I think we need to move as fast as possible on this so that those officers are in place by the warm weather in the summer when the crime rates tend to go up in this community. If we do postpone it until January, we've delayed it to a month, or if we postpone it to the budgetary session which would be May, the officers won't be taking effect until sometime in September. If we have the money to waste on such things as studies for fish tanks and for buying a property and so on and so forth, I think it's important that we keep public safety number one issue in our community. Failure to postpone this or take appropriate action on tonight, I think will tell the community citizens that your safety really is not the number one concern of the public residents, of the residents, and I think it would be a slap in the face to our community as a whole. I would object to postponing it and I would ask for approval of this forthwith.
If I could ask, yeah, well, go ahead, Councilmember. I was just gonna ask if you would mind if I had Chief Reeves come up here and I'd like to ask before we... Not to put you in the hot seat, but I guess I am. I guess I am. I think it's my understanding that the three positions that were referenced last week are, were administrative and that they were your recommendation that those three be, I guess they were retirements and changes and things like that, they weren't road officers.
Three positions not filled through attrition. Two were from command staff personnel lieutenant level and one was a patrol officer who had resigned to seek employment elsewhere. So two lieutenants and one officer were the three people that I did not pick up in order to make the budgetary savings. I would not be in favor of adding, at this time, additional command staff. I need the boots on the street.
Mayor Rep, and that's not the purpose of the motion, I am simply asking for road patrol officers, I'm not asking for command officers.
Well, I think it said to reinstate the...
Three police officer positions.
Says that the three police officer positions are reinstated, so they're not reinstated because they weren't there to begin with.
We eliminated three police officer positions, I'm asking that they be reinstated. You can be cutesy whatever way you want, it's three positions that were eliminated from the police department, I'm asking that three police officers' positions be replaced. The chief has reorganized the department, I'm asking for three police officers.
Well, I wasn't being cutesy. I think that the chief made a recommendation at that time and it certainly, I think everybody, I'll speak for myself, I can't speak for anybody else, finds that, and said that that was a number one priority. I didn't get the impression from your presentation last week that you're asking us to go out the next meeting and hire three officers. You were presenting what you thought was a problem, what is a problem, and a method to solving that problem.
That's correct.
I didn't think you were at the point yet where you're coming to us saying, I want new officers right now.
No, if I could've got away with that, I would've done it. Cannily right away, but no, I was making the presentation to make you aware of the problem. As Councilman Mueller said, it does take a period of time, so even if you would approve this, it would still take a period of time to go through the process, several months.
And what other, it says here, and to make appropriate budgetary adjustments, I guess, what are those appropriate budgetary adjustments?
I have not had the opportunity, and I need to sit down with the finance director and really go over this and make sure that we have accurate numbers and projections and we just have not had that time. We, I did broach it with him and we have to sit down and go over those numbers. So I'm not yet qualified to make any comments on that.
I guess that's, my concern is that I don't think it's our job to micromanage you and I value your opinion and I feel that you will come to us with that such request at time that you have discussed it with the finance department and as to what your going, your full plan is.
I guess I'd like the opportunity to sit with the finance manager and hash out numbers first and then perhaps come back to you on the first of January if that would be a meeting then and discuss it and perhaps with the city manager and the finance director. I know I don't currently see any room in my budget to accommodate three new hires, so that's something I, like I said, I'd have to sit down with the finance director and go over it in great detail.
Mayor Rep? Yes, Mayor Protem Archibald.
I guess I agree with Alan, I don't even know if I would say postponing it. My concern is that I think this is premature, though I definitely agree, we need as many officers as we can get on the street as fast as we can get them is a great thing. But if we're entertaining a drug task force or entertaining some kind of a collaboration with the county, I think we're being premature by selecting three people, putting them on the street when we don't know how we're gonna pay for them and we don't have our plan laid out. So I really don't see just a couple more weeks being that big of a detriment throughout the holidays. I certainly wanna move this along as fast as possible, but I am not comfortable supporting something like this until we have numbers, we know how to fix them, where we're gonna come up with that money.
Yes, Councilmember Lewandowski.
I agree with most of what's been set up here tonight about delaying this till we have a recommendation as how we're gonna pay for it. I also don't believe it's in council's position to be telling chief of police to hire people when the only person we're allowed to hire is the city manager. And if that's the case, and I say, I wanna hire three more people in the DPW department than at the next meeting, that's the, you know, the problem with council not being able to hire people, that's why we don't do that. I don't think there's any reason why we can't delay this. There's gonna become a time when he's gonna be coming probably and ask us for seven, eight officers, whatever it is, and now if we add this on top of it, it's 11 officers we gotta try to pay for, and I think we need to get your recommendation first before we make a decision on this.
Well, certainly wouldn't be 11 officers, three would be included in the total of eight. And I did, the plan did offer a phase-in period and if I was able to accomplish our mission with less than the eighth, and so be that, I was, you know, I was hopeful of that. I leave it to the council's discretion. Of course, I could use the bodies and I'm ready to up and get up and running and get ahead of this thing, that's my nature, that's what we do. But I understand that we need to have the plans in place and the time really to work this out.
If I could ask a question, your plan that you laid out tonight for your community policing, obviously you didn't, I mean, that's laid out with the existing force, correct?
Absolutely, that's right. Well, what, but the thought process being there, when I came here, we had one community service officer and that was Lori Phillips, now we have 48 community service officers.
Right.
Everybody's responsible.
And it's a wonderful plan, but I'm just saying you laid it out not expecting to get new people in that, when you laid out that.
Correct. I laid it out for you and the city and everybody else.
As it exists right now. And you feel you can do a good job with that. I'm not talking about the other.
I can do a good job with whatever.
Yeah, I'm not trying to put you on the spot, I just wondered.
Question?
Yes, go ahead.
You heard you used the word several. Let's say you're given three officers phased in, you know, we look at the budgetary aspect of that and it's hard to put a price tag on the safety of the people. I mean, if that's our hangup, that's not the way we're supposed to be addressing this. Your meeting with us the last time, I think, hit us all between the eyes in terms of the problem, the severity of it, it pushed right up to, there wasn't a category for it, it meant it was number one priority for the City of Port Huron. And we need to address that. How long would it take for you to have three officers? And you talked a little bit after the meeting about there's officers from other departments that may be out there. How long would it take for three officers to, as you say, hit the ground?
Well, you have to research what officers available, they meet our requirements, we have to go through a number of testing options, even though they may be on a list, there's psychological, there's physical, there's hearing, there's drug screens, background investigations have to be updated if they weren't done already. Then I have to make sure that I have the FDOs available to train these people and that's a matter of falling into place and having the right people at the right place. So there is a period of time it takes to schedule to get that done. It's not something that I could hire three officers and put them on the road tomorrow. You won't see the effects of those officers, they would literally be with another officer and not counted for about four months.
Four months?
Approximately.
Okay, that helps.
Mayor Rep, I have a question for the chief, if you don't mind.
Yeah, before we continue, just to make a point, we really are discussing the motion to postpone, but I know all of these facts are relevant to whether or not we vote to postpone, but we really aren't supposed to be keeping to the motion postponed, but I know that everything we're asking does weigh upon that, so I just wanted to state that, but go ahead.
Chief, would you be looking at a different type of officer today if you were to hire three than you would be, say, in a month or three weeks, once this drug task force was developed and the plan is finalized? Would you be looking for someone different?
Well, obviously, I want the cream of the crop. I want the best of the best. And I think there's a lot of officers out there that are perhaps experienced officers that have the type of experience that we could utilize, but would fit the core of what we expect here at the Port Huron Police Department. And we could take those type of officers and meld them a little bit quicker. We did that recently with a veteran officer from Waterford who had been laid off and he's worked out quite well for us. My idea is those officers coming in will be pushed to the road and then I will handpick the officers to staff a drug unit to get it up and running, to start addressing some of these neighborhood concerns immediately. That would be my hope. So if I had the bodies, I would take bodies from the patrol and put them right into that drug unit and have them start knocking down doors, cannily.
Mayor Rep?
Councilmember Mueller.
Chief, just going back to what Councilmember Ruiz said, that four months, that's just the FTO program, right? That's not including the background of the drug and the psychological and the testing.
That would be really tough to get it all done in that time period.
So in reality, we're looking at five to six months.
Could be.
Thank you.
Mayor Rep?
Yes, Councilmember Cole.
I, in the information that you presented to us last week on Monday for the DICE proposal, it, what am I trying to say? It did look like it was about six months before things really started to get rolling and then a year, and you had alluded to some decisions that were gonna be made in the meantime. So what could be done if we weren't to put three officers, if we weren't to go through with this resolution? What could be done in the meantime? What kind of things were you alluding to, like this community policing program, is that part of the?
Well, that's part of the fight, is getting the community involved and I think that's a big piece of it. Another piece is I wanted the opportunity to sit down with the finance director and see if we could appropriate, find some funding somehow, or I could perhaps use overtime dollars to start filling that void and go after some of these houses or some of these people that we know that are terrorizing the neighborhoods. That's where I wanted to start at. So instead of waiting perhaps to July, I, it bothers me that I would allow a problem to last till July, I wanna, you know, I wanna start throwing some type of resource at it. So that's what I would do, I'd backfill overtime and take a couple bodies and we would selectively go and try to hit some of those areas that are a real problem and see if we could start giving relief to areas or neighborhoods and stop incidents.
Mayor Rep?
Go ahead.
Thanks, you go.
Have you had any dialogue with Sheriff Donlin?
We have a meeting scheduled for next week.
Who's attending?
I'm sorry, sir?
Just the two of you, meeting?
There'll be several people, I believe the mayor will be there, the city manager, Mr. Bohm, the county commissioner, and the sheriff and myself, I believe, are the people invited to that meeting.
Thank you.
Yeah, Mayor Rep, I don't think I'm in the early stages of dementia because I figure that the meeting last Monday, we mentioned several variables on the time of putting officer, new officers on the street. And if I believe right, it was, we had talked about even getting an officer on the street by, or start the process in January. And I think that if we move to slow this process down, we're just taking a step backward.
Comments?
I think we're only asking to postpone to January, so we're still doing exactly what we said last week, we'd like to get this moving in January. I for one would like to see more information and be able to explain how we're gonna do this. Certainly want to do this, but we need to make sure we have a plan in place and we know what we're doing before we move forward.
One of the opportunities, if I may, I'd like the opportunity to call the cops office in Washington DC and see if there's a possibility of me perhaps submitting a late application after the fact if somebody withdrew their interest in the cops program and see if I could extend hiring somebody in the cops program where the federal government would pick up a portion of the salaries. I know some cities have turned that money back in, you know, I don't know if money's there, but that's one of the opportunities. I have two officers on a cops program now, I'd like that opportunity to do that. It's tougher in this time of year to get somebody in Washington sometimes to pick up the phone, but that's...
That's true.
It's one thing, I'd like the opportunity to try.
I'm not saying that this is not an important issue, it certainly is one of the most important ones facing our community, but this presentation was just last Monday and, you know, we get criticized for running into, spending money and not knowing where it's gonna come from and all this, a lot of things. And it's very important, but I, I'm looking for your recommendation of what you want to do, how you wanna lay it out, a whole plan, when you're gonna hire this person, that, you know, this many, that many. And I would like to see the meeting occur between us and the county to see what cooperative things we can do too, which I, and that's my only hesitation, and I believe we should wait until January, until you, the meeting's been and so you've met with the finance department, you've talked to Washington, all of the avenues are looked at so that we have a full plan and we're not just saying, go ahead, hire and, you know, we haven't approved the plan yet, so, you know, that's not come before us for approval, so we're hiring and we haven't even approved the plan. Not that we're not going to approve some type of plan, but like this is premature until January, but it's certainly not a reflection on the problem not being important or on your recommendation, but I would like to actually see your recommendation in writing given to us as to what you exactly want, how it's going to work, et cetera. So that's my two cents worth. We have a motion on the floor to postpone.
Mayor Rep? I think I need to amend my motion though, because I think I said budgetary meetings.
Oh, so January?
Yes, amended to January.
Well, you do have a special meeting that I haven't quite posted yet, but I have received the letter for January 30th. Is that the date you were thinking of?[1683.01]
I think we should just postpone it till January so that the chief has an opportunity, and assuming he's ready to discuss it January 9th, fine, if he has more information he has to get, then, but I would say, is that acceptable?
Yeah.
And your second was by?
Councilmember Cole.
Cole.
So, January 9th?
Yes.
Okay.
Do you think you'll have something?
Absolutely.
Okay. Thank you, I appreciate that. This is, motion then is to postpone action until January the 9th. Take the vote.
Councilmember Lewandowski?
Yes.
Councilmember Mueller?
No.
Councilmember Ruiz?
Yes.
Councilmember Archibald?
Yes.
Councilmember Cole?
Yes.
Councilmember Harris?
No.
Mayor Rep?
Yes.
You're going to postpone until January the 9th. Resolution number 13.
Is approving the commitment of tax increment finance funds and Michigan Department of Transportation mitigation funds in support of the Blue Water Area Convention Center and the improvement in Harker Street as a main access route to the Thomas Citizen Inn property project.
Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Thank you, Mayor Protam Archibald. Is there a second?
Support.
Councilmember Ruiz? Is there discussion?
Mayor Rep?
Councilmember Harris?
On the possibilities of this motion was the fact that, under the Michigan Act 125-1664, it basically says, and I don't know if we've done it yet, "Approval of tax increment financing plan shall be pursuant to the notice, hearing, and disclosure provisions of Section 18." And I just wondered if we would be moving too fast that we haven't had a public hearing on tax increment financing.
We'll have Mr. Fletcher address that.
This tax increment financing plan's already in place. It has been for a number of years, so what will have to happen is to make all of this happen, it'll have to be amended, so assuming the council approves this, then follow-up steps would include amending the tax increment financing plan, proper public notice hearing, all that kind of stuff.
Thank you. Is there any other questions, discussion? We'll take the vote.
Councilmember Mueller?
No.
Councilmember Ruiz?
Yes.
Councilmember Archibald?
Yes.
Councilmember Cole?
Yes.
Councilmember Harris?
No.
Councilmember Lewandowski?
No.
Mayor Rep?
Yes. The motion does pass, correct?
Yes.
Resolution 14.
Is authorizing the waiver and release of the city's first right to purchase back approximately 500 feet of riverfront just north of the former Seaway Terminal in order for this property to be gifted by the Atchison Foundation to the Community Foundation of St. Clair County for their River Walk project.
Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Thank you, Councilmember Harris. Is there a second?
Second.
Mayor Protam Archibald. Is there discussion?